Good evening and welcome to the August 11th regular meeting of the Hillsborough Town Board of Commissioners. I won't read the public charge, but it is in the printed agenda. We have a long history of abiding by that charge. The second item on the agenda is audience comments not related to the printed agenda. We have one person signed up. That's me, Si Hoag. Come on up, Si.
Thank you very much.
And please speak into the microphone so we can hear.
Si is Hoag. Unfortunately, I live on Burnside Drive. And I know that you all are very aware of everything that's going on with the town itself and the citizens themselves in terms of the cars and the flooding here. And I just, I remember when I was on the Board of Adjustment, going through the minutes of the town meetings and finding a list of stuff that went on. One thing was they were thinking about raising the Ben Johnson dam. And they did a study of a one-third possible rain in Hillsborough. And they said it would bring water through Hillsborough. Now, you can fact check me on this because I don't really know. But a one-third possible rain bring water through Hillsborough at 535 feet above sea level. My house is at 505. So there are things that are impediments to living down there. Perhaps you shouldn't. And things are changing. And the climate's changing and everything's moving in a way that I would just ask the town board to see, to get staff to look into the possible things you can do to help not just myself, but everybody else that suffered. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Si. I can tell you that we are, have begun an after-action report that's comprehensive, well comprehensive, and coordinated across the whole county, which I will cover in the county itself.
And it's tough because the way the funding has been pulled from the federal, you still have the state, but the federal, it may, it may come back. It is politically expedient.
Yeah, but thank you. I'm sure that will be included in our report. Thank you. Okay, on to item number three, agenda changes and approval. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All in favor? Any opposed? And on to number four. We are going to have a report from the league municipalities about risk review and award presentation to the Hillsborough Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forward. I would like also thank you for recognizing the importance of law enforcement risk review. And my name's Chad Epler and I'm a public safety consultant, risk management consultant with the league municipalities. I started with the league back in May. I retired after 30 years of service with the Department of Insurance in Raleigh. And it became a good fit after having a career in law enforcement and insurance to start looking in ways we could help others in their risk management. What is a risk review? We did a comprehensive agency review of over 40 liability areas, ensuring that the agency adheres to best practice and industry standards. Some of the areas that we look at include police pursuits, use of force, employment practices, training, and much more. Steps in review included an in-depth policy review with proofs of compliance, on-site agency assessment that included equipment and facility inspections, officer interviews, and observation of daily operations. And we're proud to report that Hillsborough Police Department has completed the law enforcement risk review process. And would like to add this to your agency's achievements. To put this into perspective, at the league, we represent several hundred law enforcement agencies across the state. And roughly 200 had pledged to complete the risk review and are in process, but only around 90 have actually successfully completed the process. So I would like to commend the chief and the staff members who prioritized this initiative. And they were wonderful to work with and worked to our staff. And they were very open, transparent, receptive during the process. And I would like to also point out that I was talking to your town manager earlier. And some of the things that you're doing here in Hillsborough, after when I was reading your comprehensive report, I have extracted some of that. We're recommending that to other cities across the state. So I think it's important that you know that Hillsborough is a leader in making sure that the risk that you face as a city and a town and your residents face, they're addressing those in an attempt to save your system. The largest sum of money, but also to enhance those best practices of law enforcement. So we'd like to present the chief, if you'll come up, with this plaque. And it says, "The North County League of Municipalities recognizes the Hillsborough Police Department for completing the law enforcement risk management review and proactively serving the community in a professional manner while taking steps to minimize risk to your citizens and officers." And we present that August the 11th of 2025.
Would you be okay if I had Marshall Grayson come over here with us?
Yes.
He is our, we got a new title.
Yes.
And, but he handled our accreditation. So he gets, he should get his own credit for this.
All right.
You want to hold it?
Sure. And we appreciate your, your commitment with the league. And we're here to help you. Always know that the league is an extension of your staff in your town. We're here to help you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Marie, you're up next. Starfield Booster Pump Station and River Pump Station status. We haven't talked about those things in a long time.
Evening, everyone. Yes, we have not talked about these in a long time, and I'm being sarcastic on that. But I did want to give you a formal update for yourselves and for the public on where we stand on these two projects, which, as you know, Chair in the wrong screen.
Sorry. Someone's changed the display. That's what it is. Thank you. I'll give it one shot.
And let's figure out how to advance this slide. Yeah, just this one. Yeah. Okay, great. All right, our two projects, Starfield Booster Pumping Station. The goal of this project is to receive water from Orange Water and Sewer Authority if needed during emergencies. And to do that, we need to build a booster pumping station. And that will be situated down off Old NC 86 near Starfield Circle. That's the name. As you know, we were awarded some grant funding to build this station. We were signing agreements in two different phases. We have executed agreements for Phase One, which is for design and bidding. Phase Two is for construction. We learned in April of this year that that funding has been revoked. And at the same time, we had actually received duplicate funding through the State and Tribal Assistance Grant. That is through EPA. But because we were having trouble merging the use of both funds at one time, we just went with the brick funding and decided that we were going to repurpose the STAG funding for another water project or wastewater project until we lost the funding. So now we have circled back around and we have our consultant, ICF, working on doing the formal application for the STAG funding. We have a work plan for that, and it's being submitted next week. And then the next step will be the budget and the application. We are still working under the Phase One brick until further notice. They have not exactly told us that they would not reimburse us for the portion that we have an agreement for. They are denoting when we submit reimbursement request that any invoices dated after April 1st are not guaranteed to be reimbursed. But we have still not received any formal notification from the state or from FEMA that we cannot go forth under Phase One. And we're almost done with Phase One. Anyway, we have 100% design plans. We are circling back and checking the flood protection that we can offer and where we're going to site this, which is currently outside any of that floodplain area. But given what we experienced a few weeks ago, we're just seeing how we can further provide some protection through putting the pumps and electrical controls up higher, putting floodproof doors around the building and so forth. We're working on evaluating land for acquisition negotiations. Some of you have been approached or copied on some of the Starfield Circle HOA residents. And we are aware of those and are responding to them. There's really only one homeowner whose land we're looking for. And we're looking for like a 40-foot by 60-foot area. It's not very large at all. And it's actually in a buffer area and a setback area that is normally unusable space. But Orange County would allow it to be used for a small building and what they're classifying as a utility installation. So we're working with her, but now some other people have come forth and we will be addressing their, their questions. Typical concerns, you know, it's going to devalue our property. It's going to be unsightly, things like that. So I have some ideas on the next slide about what the building could look like. And of course, we already have a landscape plan and around the fencing. So it'll be pretty much shielded except for a gravel drive that will be in the DOT right away that goes to this parcel. What else? So we're taking a multi-pronged approach again, and we're going for a hazard mitigation grant. That was something we also started on with ICF after we learned of losing the Phase Two funding. And they are under contract to work on that. We actually did submit a letter of interest in May and heard back from them in June to say that, yes, this looks like this project will fit under this program, but they're not releasing full invitation or application instructions until later this month. And the applications will be received on a rolling basis starting in October. So thankfully, a lot of the information, we're just picking and choosing from our existing brick application. It's not going to be a lot of effort to prepare the application for hazard mitigation grant program or the STAG funding. So again, we're just at the advice of ICF going for whatever funding seems to be available that our project fits and that we can get as quickly as possible so we can keep moving. Back to the concerns of some of the owners. Some of them, and it's probably part my fault, I pointed to the Mayo Booster Station on, over there by the Mayo, it's Mayo Street and Orange Grove Road, which is a bit older, but I was pointing it to them because of the size. But this building can look much nicer. We've already specified split-face concrete block building, but these are some of the ideas that we'll talk about to make sure that people are satisfied and we can go forward with that project again with the landscaping and the privacy fencing. We hope that we can satisfy any concerns. And this is a slide that I added today, so it is not in your packet. If you would like me to send you the presentation with that slide in there, I'm happy to do so. On to the River Sewer Pumping Station. The goal on this is to move it out of the floodway. So it does not get flooded. We did actually check the site that we proposed to move it to during Chantau. And it fared well. There was no visible signs of any type of problem up there. And that site is north of the existing site. It's actually about a one-acre little corner piece in the very far southeast corner of the 20-acre River Elementary School parcel. I presented to the school board several years ago when we were applying for the brick funding and gave them an overview of the project. Again, now we, we've got the brick funding, same thing as Starfield Circle. We have Phase One contract. Phase Two for construction, which was the biggest chunk of money, is now been withdrawn and we are working on the same thing, going to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's sort of the same timeline. We're eligible for this because they declared an emergency for statewide from Helene, although they are prioritizing obviously the western counties, which had greater impacts. We still feel like the state will give some other priority to the brick projects that lost the funding as well. That's what we're hearing. I can't guarantee anything, and I certainly don't know all the answers on whether we'll be approved or not. But we're in the same situation as Starfield Circle. We're still submitting our design invoice request under Phase One, hoping to be reimbursed. We just submitted a handful of them last week. And we are working on the land, getting the plats, the amount of easement we need. We have tried very hard to keep the travel paths to the new station on existing sewer easements so that we do not have to negotiate for a lot of extra land. But there will be, there will be some that we'll have to talk to about three or four owners about, including the school. In talking with ICF the other day, they were also throwing out that there could be opportunity for other funding to become available to us if, and it may have already happened. If the county major disaster declaration is announced, then there's a public assistance program, which is state-administered and not really dealing with the feds. We know that there was an assessment on July 29th. And that would make us definitely eligible under the public assistance program to get reimbursement for what we're doing right now. They did mention a 406 hazard mitigation grants that would, would have allowed us to bring the station back to existing condition. However, I don't think it's feasible to bypass pump for that long to go through that whole process. It already makes me nervous having the bypass pumps, but everything is running very smoothly. And let's keep our fingers crossed for that. As for restoring the River Pumping Station in its existing site, we are simply waiting on some materials. And we have received one quote for the demolition and installation of new. And we have also reached out last week to a second contractor. Honestly, we had a little sticker shock with the first quote. So we're just comparing to see where we land on that. And basically, I'm open for questions, but that is where we stand right now on those two projects. We're working hard to replace that funding and keep the projects going as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Marie. I know that you and team are working, you know, double time to figure all this out and keep things going while trying to move everything else forward in terms of the new facilities. So thank you very much. I think most of us had the opportunity to have one of your tours of the River Pump Station and have seen it on site ourselves. So we appreciate those efforts and all the efforts that we've also gone to to show other people what that damage looks like. So thank you. So any questions for Marie?
No questions, but I know you've been doing Yovin's work, so thank you.
Evelyn, do you have any questions?
She always does a good job.
Thank you so much. And I have to thank my people. They're the ones who really pulled it together and they did their preparations. And they have the relationships with the contractors and vendors to get a quick response when we have a situation like this.
Thank you. And please share our appreciation for their work.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to item number five on the agenda appointments. I'll read all three and set the motion for one. Motion to cover all three. Reappointment of Jeanette Benji to the Planning Board, representing the ETJ. Sean Keough for a three-year term to the Planning Board. And reappointment of Rainbow Cabbage to a second term on the tourism.
Move to approve all three appointments as presented.
Second, thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Matt. All in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, and next on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To approve as presented.
Second, thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Matt. All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along to item number seven. We have the the first item is a police department reorganization presentation. Chief Lynn, good to see you. Thank you.
Got water this time.
Evening.
Big.
So I wanted to share with you a proposal. And when I say it's a reorg, the entire department is not being tossed around. I don't want to give people that. But we're, want to make some modifications in the top command structure as well as take advantage of all the positions that we actually have allotted to the police department. And you'll see all that as I go through. If you have any questions, if you can save them for the end, because I might answer them as we go through. And I'd be glad to go back to any slides to clarify any data points or any other questions you may have. Okay?
Sounds good.
So want to start off, what are the goals of this? What are we trying to accomplish? We definitely want to streamline our command structure. And you'll see that when you look at the current command structure compared to the proposed command structure. Create new opportunities because that is something that we have struggled with over the past in terms of officers having opportunities as well as promotional opportunities for some. I've been trying to share an idea with the department of having big department offerings in a smaller agency. And so you'll see some of that as we go through. And then also, I want to clarify roles and expectations. There's a lot of ambiguity at times about who does what. And I think that when we, when we put this together and when we start implementing it, if approved, of course, then we can start really defining the roles in the agency and everyone will get adjusted to it as we move through it. We also, because of retirements like Chief Hampton and being the interim role right now, it opens up opportunities for promotion. So I thought this was a perfect time to implement the changes so that way it would all happen at once instead of promoting people and then having to make adjustments after that. So. So this chart, it shows, the top one shows the number of sworn staff. And it shows in terms of total years of law enforcement experience in five-year groups, except for the last one's 20-plus. And then the bottom one shows the years of law enforcement experience for our supervisors. So sergeants and above. So if you look, we have quite a few five, five-year lease officers, but a big chunk of them are six or 10 years. And those are people who either are ready to take the next step in their career or they have come to us from another agency and maybe they're already in a supervisory position, but they're still looking to advance their career as they move forward. And then if you look at the bottom one, two of those positions out of those 12 are me and Major Simmons. Okay? And we don't have anywhere to go, and that's fine by us. But for the other 10, we need to give them a vision for the future in terms of what do they have to look forward to? What's the next step? So if you look at our current organization, I think it looks really mushed together. Okay? And if you look at it, currently I have three people reporting to me, two majors and our management and accreditation coordinator. But then when you look at the two majors, there's an imbalance in their span of control. So the admin support major had an admin lieutenant and an investigative lieutenant. But the operations major has a social worker and two patrol lieutenants. And then when you look after, down from there, the admin lieutenant has three people. You know, patrol lieutenants have two. It's, it's a big imbalance. And that's what I want to show you all. And if you look at it currently, there's 29 sworn positions. Okay, but I checked with finance, I promised a budget. We have 31. So, so I want to take advantage of those positions. And I'll show that to you in the next quarter. So when we're looking at the pros and cons of the current structure that we have, two majors oversee the divisions. That's been working so far. Okay, we haven't had any issues. But there's fewer management positions for Okay, we haven't had any issues, um, but there's fewer management positions for the supervisory person. So kind of, ever since I started there, they said, you're gonna have to wait a long time. Now, they lied to me, but, uh. But they said you've got to wait a long time for opportunities to come over. Okay, and I don't want people to feel that way. I want people to see that there are opportunities in terms of. When we look at the cons, the span of control is so imbalanced. You have some people supervising one person. Then you have some people supervising three people, then you have, you know, patrol, you could be up to four people. We want to keep things all in line together. Uh, the second in command split up, so there's two majors that report to the chief. So who's gonna be covering or in charge when the chief is out? Well, I guess it'd be flip a coin, you know, it, it leaves, uh, people wondering, who do I need to go see? And do I send an email out every time somebody's out? It's not a big deal, but it does help when it comes to, um. Officers having a clear idea of what's happening, uh, more hats worn per supervisor. So if you go to, uh, Durham or another large municipality, Rock, Charlotte. You've got a ton of people that work there and some things, some things that, let's say, uh, we'll just say Lieutenant White, who's over investigations. There's probably four people doing all the things that he does, but we don't have that. We wear many hats in the smaller agents. So what we want to do is find how we can give personnel in a balance of equal, uh, uh, opportunities to grow. While also not overwhelming people, or we want to make sure that everything is being done to the best that we can. And then again, we're not taking advantage of allotted positions, so. Okay, so the proposal will be to reclassify the major, uh, the two major positions, combine them and turn them into one assistant chief. Okay, and then it will create two captain positions that sandwich in between assistant chief and the lieutenants. So one admin support captain and one operations captain. And if you look at the, uh, the chart of the right. With the table, excuse me, and from bottom you'll see that we don't change the number of positions needed for the department. We're working with what we currently have. The major, the two major positions turn to one assistant chief, then two new captain positions are created. And then we have seventeen officer positions, but we'll, we'll take one of those positions and upgrade it. The other thing to consider is, as far as I know, we've never taken advantage of all those officer positions. But when you see the next chart of what the organizations look like, we're actually gonna have more than what we even currently have. So I'll, I'll show you that next. The proposed organization, as you can see, is a little more spread out. Almost every person only has two people reporting to them, including myself. I would have the assistant chief and a management accreditation coordinator. And then the captains will have, the assistant chief will have two captains, and so on and so on, except for. On patrol, the sergeants have three officers that report to them. And if you look at the bottom right, you'll see that there's two K nine officer positions that'll be built back into the patrol division. Currently, they are just, uh, they serve as officers who have a dog. We want to make them into a special position where they have a flex shift, so that way they're available at high priority times. As well as able to train together. Right now, it's just that they may be working day shift, they may be working night shift. But only one squad gets to take advantage of having the K nine position, and I think that's not fair for the rest of the department. The social worker will then go under Sergeant Foster in community services. And she actually, I had a good conversation with her today. She expressed a lot of interest of engaging with the community more. And I thought that would be a great tie-in, as well as with, um, Officer Curry Hall. And so we'll look at the pros and cons of the new proposed organization. Having this, having assistant chief is in line with neighboring agencies. It's something that if you come from another agency or if you're in law enforcement. You're familiar with the assistant chief position. It makes sense to people, and also captains. You actually don't hear about majors very often unless you're in a much larger department. So changing the name roles, Carboro has captains, Sheriff's Office has captains, Chapel Hill has captains, so. Um, again, we'll have a clear second in command with the assistant chief, more opportunities will be available internally. Better control will be more streamlined. Responsibilities will be spread out, and I'll get into that in a minute. And we'll be utilizing, fully utilizing our currently allotted positions. And the cons are, it will require the department to adjust to a new structure. We're gonna have to have some growing pains, I'm sure, uh, training, information. Uh, as well as the community's gonna have to get involved with that, but I'll get to that part in a bit. So if you look into areas of responsibility with the new proposal. Feel like I'm doing, I don't want to read from the slides to you guys, but the big part is, I'm gonna continue on what I'm doing. But I'll also be supervising the assistant chief, mentoring the assistant chief, as well as the accreditation and management coordinator. It's a new title. Um, still engage with the board of community, steer the directs in the department. Just all of my other responsibilities as well in managing personnel. The assistant chief oversee the division, so he'll still be supervising the two captains. But as you guys have seen, especially with, uh, Chantel, the emergency management is a big, big job for that person. And I feel like putting that over top of, uh, the other responsibilities of being, we'll say a captain now, but a major. And taking care of your divisions and then handling emergency management, he has to almost step away from his current job to handle emergency management at times. And, uh, this will allow him to be available for that, and everything will continue as normal. Um, he's also our internal accountability administrator, special events, he handles our timekeeping for the department. But also he'll be able to assist with attending meetings. If I'm gone, or if I can't be two places at once. We'll have a clear representative from the agency, the assistant chief shows up, and also to community events. The captains, the admin support captain, they have a lot of tasks. They have people too, but they have a lot of tasks. So manage investigations, community services and administration, oversee recruitment and hiring, our internal accountability manager. Oversee our special teams of ERT alert, and also we're looking to build a community team, oversee training. And our diversion of social worker and manage facilities and fleets, a lot of different moving parts. Operations captain, it may look like they have less things they're doing, but they have eighteen people they're overseeing. And I don't know if you guys, uh, have, come have, come work a patrol schedule, like I said, or not work it, but like manage one. And try to get things worked out. That can be such a job sometimes, so that can be a lot of work. Supervising patrol lieutenants, the court liaison for the department, managing our FTO program, which we're constantly evolving. Towing procedures and K nine.
Remind me, FTO is?
Field training officers, yes, sir, all our new recruits. And so if you look at the needs and costs of this proposal, so we're gonna repurpose an office, currently a storage room. But it has been cleaned up quite a bit by Marshall and when we had our intern, Tyler. Um, reassigned a vehicle, we have enough vehicles, so it's not like we had to acquire new vehicles. We will have to work with HR and reclassification of the major position and create the captain positions, which we've already started looking at job descriptions and. We'll have to work together to get that all figured out, and then share changes with the community. So I think we should definitely do a social media press release campaign, but also host a meet and greet event, which is something. With all the new people we've had in the agency, would probably be a really good idea to do anyways, get to know the leaders within the agency. Uh, see what, what all we do, we can share something, we could possibly do something during a community summit, but it may be good to have something. We might not be done in time for all that, so, but I definitely think it's a good idea for us to have an event where we can get to know the community. And they can get to know the people who run the department. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. That's a lot of information, a lot of it makes sense from, from my perspective. I will ask one question, then we'll go around the table for other questions. That is, um, Eric. Does, does this plan make operational sense from your perspective as the town manager? Because. We have to make sure that you're okay.
Yeah, thank you, uh, yes. So, and one of the things that I appreciate, uh, interim chief Lynn doing was getting a lot of feedback from the officers. And talking with the staff and, uh, and then, you know, working, working this out through them. So yeah, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense for the reasons that he said.
Okay, thank you. Evelyn, can we start on your side? Do you, do you have any questions for Chief about his proposed plan?
No, not really. I read this, and when you go around the room, I'll, I'll think about something else. Just a moment, I think he's given a good presentation.
Okay, thank you, Evelyn. Matt, no questions. Kathleen?
I've got a lot of questions. Um. Going from the, uh, uh, going from major to captain. How are they feeling about this? Because I'm looking at that, if I don't know these people, I get a resume, it looks like a demotion.
And I understand, I've actually discussed this with the lieutenants, who would be the ones who would be going for that. When I first presented the idea to them, I said, the first question is, how do you feel about it? And it took them a while to think about, and they're like, ah, you know, major sounds really nice, but they said it makes the most sense. And I, I will tell you, I sat down with all four lieutenants, and they all felt the same way at the end of the day. They all support this proposal. And trust me, if they were not happy about it and talking about it to others, it would have made us wait in the, I promise you.
I was about to say, because that's gonna be the second question is, um, how are folks really feeling? How are they really feeling, and how would you know if they're telling you the truth, as opposed to, I mean, now that you're, you're, you're in your position, your jokes are funnier. People are gonna.
That's true. I have noticed that.
Your jokes are funnier, they're gonna be less, it is just the power bias. They're gonna be less willing to tell you straight up. They will tell all sorts of things. So how do you know you're hearing truth power?
Well, I'll, I'll address that from a couple of different angles. Uh, one thing, I have built a great relationship with people over the years, and I hope that. Me being in this position now hasn't tainted that too much. But I also, I, uh, I work out with the people that, you know, worked, we worked together, we trained together. And I'm just sad, I take people for rides and get coffee. You'll see us at different coffee shops. We went to Kim's today. Um, and I get to know these people very well, and I'll ask them hard questions, and I'll even tell them, I'm like, don't be afraid to hurt my feelings. I want brutal honesty, because if something doesn't work out and no one speaks up, well, then we all fail together. But at the same time, I, I, I have trust that I am getting honest feedback. I know that, uh, Major Simmons, he's not afraid to hurt my feel, no one's afraid to hurt my feelings at the department, I'll tell you that much, but. At the same time, I, I feel very confident that we've received good feedback and, um. Yeah.
Okay, cool beans, cool beans.
I'm jumping to build on your questions. There, and there's currently an anonymous, an anonymous survey that's gone out to the department. That's all due, that's coming. I'm the only person that sees it, it's anonymous, and then there's a variety of questions. So, as I mentioned in the email, update to the board, uh, if there turns out a problem as far as me getting feedback in different areas. It's like there's an opportunity for us to change course or pull the plug, and even if the board goes, gives the go-ahead, hey, this sounds good tonight. We still need at least a few weeks or a month to come back to the board with the updated job description, so there's additional time.
Fair, fair enough. Um, the, the one thing, um, in terms of, of the roles, the clarity roles. It's one of the things that I've heard through the years, through, through very, folks throughout the agency. Is one of the attractiveness and, and recruiting pluses is people, people being able to choose. Their strengths and policing. Well, they still have that flexibility, so we don't lose that recruiting edge.
I think absolutely. I think this actually expands upon that. Uh, the big thing, if you, when you get a, well, you, you've got the, in the, uh, packet. That proposed for this, which are, and in that, you'll see that we do not, with, with the change, we're making takeaway any opportunities. If anything, we have more now than we've had since I've ever been at the, uh, Hillbrook Police Department, so. And I hope to continue to expand on that. And one other thing I didn't add in there is, this, this, uh, structure that we're looking at should take us. Well into the future, without having to come and ask for another modification. As the town continues to grow, we should be primed and set for handling all the needs that comes away. Uh, the only thing I could see us potentially doing is potentially adding more patrol officers. If the, you know, the call volume and the population, they could that.
Now that, now that, that makes sense. Um. The, the last little bit is with your span of control on the supervision and mentoring. That looks like that has potential for micromanagement, so that's sort of, do you have checks and balances with the folks you oversee? So that you're providing coaching, mentoring, and not the micromanaging.
Absolutely, uh.
And that is not personal.
Sure, no, no. One thing that people, like, like, all you say, Dwayne used to give me a hard time about is. He thought I should be more of a micromanager, maybe I was too much in the opposite direction, but, uh. Build a good rapport with the team, uh, we give good feedback, uh. I'll tell you, like, I had lieutenants come to me and say, I didn't like the fact that you did that.
Okay.
And then even I adjust accordingly, or, you know, and you, you, you take it on, on the chin. But, yeah, I, I haven't seen any issues with that. We, we talk, we have command staff meetings every other week, where everybody gets together. Uh, I meet with Andy almost daily, uh, we look at the processes in terms of, um. How actions are taken, how we look at proactivity, we look at how, uh, officer morale, and those indicators have been going up, so.
Fantastic, because that was gonna be the, the last thing, is that really the guys, the gals are really happy, because ultimately. They're happy, we're happy.
They're still showing up to work, so I'm happy about that, so, uh, no, I, I think everything's going real well, and I'm really curious to see how the survey.
Yeah.
Turns out, but from everything we've been hearing, uh, it's, it's all been positive so far. I mean, I'm still in the honeymoon stage, so, you know, but who knows?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
Um, I have a whole lot of questions, but so, if I heard right, do we have two vacant positions right now? So you've refully staffed to twenty-nine positions right now? Or staffed that twenty-nine?
The only reason that I'm hesitating is because we did have a recent resignation in our FTO, but we still have one in FTO. I would have to, uh, can I, can I send you an email follow-up?
No, that's fine, I just, um, I just, yeah, that, that's totally fine.
Because we have a sergeant vacancy right now, but we were looking to fulfill everything when all these changes were made. And it'll create other sergeant vacancies if, when the captains or lieutenants are promoted to captain and the sergeants promote to lieutenant. So there'll be a funnel effect, but, um, at the same time, we also have some people in the pipeline, uh, for hiring. But I can get you, I could still, no matter what, I'll get you a follow-up so you know where the status of.
So I get, I get my question is, is we're, we're not adding any additional positions for this proposal.
No, sir, okay. We're working within the confines of what we've been given already.
That, that's kind of what areas, I want to just clarify that. Um, I, I like everything I've heard, you know, I think, um. The importance of communication, which it seems that, you know, you're doing that across, across the organization and, you know, as a town manager and. And building that, you know, trust within, um, is, is so important, um, to, you know, to being, um. It's, it's functional and operative as well as you can. Um, and then I love the, I love the idea of just, you know, increasing opportunities for people within the organization, um, so that they. Um, know that, you know, there is room for growth and that they'll continue to, to hopefully, you know, grow and develop and, and wanna, uh, kind of move up into. To more of a leadership role. So, um, I'd like, you know, I like, I like where I've heard so far.
Thanks, sir.
Megan? Um, I don't have any specific questions. Um, I would like to say, I appreciate though, looking at, uh, the job. All the jobs and balancing that all out, and also as Rob mentioned, the, um, giving more opportunity to folks to grow. Knowing that we're still probably gonna lose some good people on outside agencies if jobs don't come available right away, but. Um, I think it's great that it gives somebody to strive for and to work towards, so, uh, I think it's good. I don't, don't have any other questions, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Megan. Um, Erica, I have one more question for you, and that is, the, the action requested tonight is to improve the reorganization. Presented in the proposal, but it sounds like there's still more work to do, so are you looking for? A, a level of comfort subject to, to any information you might learn as part of the survey and the work that you said that needs to be done over the next few weeks? Because in my mind, this is really a town manager function, not for doing department or organization, they're saying, so.
Right, uh, good question. And when I chime in, if I'm, I'll face anybody, let me know, as I, as I mentioned, the, uh, the part that's critical for this to move forward. Would be the board, because the board approves the number of positions that are allocated basically via the budget. And then the actual, like, the, the position classing, like, so whatever, uh, whatever the study says, like converting the major to assistant chief. And then, uh, and creating the new captain's positions. Basically, uh, they would come to you with those, those classing, this would be a grade whatever. This is the range, and if the board approves it, then that's where your official approval comes from. Tonight, just more informal feedback, like, hey, this looks good, we support it, or we want more information. Then that can, uh, uh, let the chief know, like, hey, can I, they could go ahead and get starting ramped up for the, the different. Rounds of, uh, assessment center and selection, so.
That makes sense, this, this very clear, thank you.
I've got one other question.
Yes.
Um, you know, we've always allowed chief to hire against the curve, so that. I've got one other question. Um, you know, we've always allowed chief to hire against the curve so that if he wins, always like four positions that if they're great candidates, he, if we're full of staff, do it. My understanding, we have still continued with that and I just wanna verify.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, uh, since you've been on the board a long time, was whatever the retreat was that we had in the library in downtown was we had, sorry, it had to be ten years ago, just shared with the board, the, that, uh, the way we had been operating is if we ever get a really strong candidate, especially the one that brings special skills or diversity, even if we're in full staff, we'll move forward and the board said thumbs up, green light. So we've continued to do that, which is important as the board knows, like sometimes it takes a year to cycle through. So even if we're ever in the luxury position, hey, we've got two extra bodies, we hardly ever go over budget on it. So it's a safe and easy thing to do and I appreciate the board supporting that.
That was something I wanted to make sure we, I had, um, it hadn't come to my intention that that had stopped, but I wanted to verify that that was still in place. Um, especially given how critical recruiting is. I did have one other question because when we were looking at the positions, there's, can you go back to where there's the chart with the Excel sheet, the Excel, uh, there we go. So we go from seventeen to sixteen, seven, seven, four, four, two, one. I'm like not doing the math. So the officer seventeen to officer sixteen, what happens to that one officer in the current distribution into that post-distribution? Because I've accounted for the major to assistant. So I'm like, where, where? Hell.
Okay, so we've never known we had that position as far as I know. So it's been, but it's been in our budget. It's been there for us, but we've never, I guess, uh, formally filled that officer position. So technically we won't be missing anything. And if you, uh, just take a look at this real quick. Currently on patrol, right now we're running, uh, fourteen off.
Right, I see that you've built in those two so that we've got a full complementance balance. I, I got that one. I was just trying to do the math there and it was like the, the org chart made complete sense.
Yes.
I was getting lost in the math.
So this two turns to one. This zero turns to two, so we still have an imbalance of one.
Oh, okay. So that position goes, got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Curry Hall's position. What's that? Yeah, uh, nevermind. Ignore me. Okay, yeah, okay.
And that actually leads to one other question, because I know you mentioned that, that, that Officer Foster in community. He's been in Canines for, for ages. Is he okay not having a dog?
He is because he still oversees the canine program.
Okay.
But he truly loves what he's doing with.
I know he absolutely loves, but it's like, I know, I know both are hard, but there's also that institutional knowledge and that skills.
We don't wanna lose that.
No.
I agree.
Thank you. That's, I promise that's a.
No, that's okay. Okay, any other?
Matt? I do wanna point out that your math's wrong on your table.
You know why? Cause this includes non-swarm positions.
Yeah.
Well, which part?
Cause if you're gonna do two canine officers, you gotta include the dogs too.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
And are we gonna get the third dog?
We wanna fill that one first. So right now we're down to one. We wanna get the second in and then we can see how things go from there.
I, I'll, I'll be glad to help with that, Jason, but for the third dog, second dog too, but third dog too.
We'll, we'll tip you up on that.
And any, any more questions?
Yeah, you said something that, uh, yeah, I forgot what rank Foster is.
He's a sergeant right now.
Sergeant, um. Chief is gonna do what other than be canine?
Right now, he's currently serving as our community services sergeant right here.
Yeah, that's what he was at the February thing.
Yes, ma'am. And so he oversees our, our community officer hall. And then he will start supervising Yasmin, our divergent social worker. But he also helps out.
She's, you, you didn't replace him.
So, yeah.
Is she there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so she, so right now she reports directly to me. And I think she would get a lot more, uh, uh, she'd have a lot more fun and feel more fulfillment if she reported to the community services division. So.
Makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
She's, she's the good officer.
She's great. Okay, last chance. Any more questions?
I, I promise I'm done.
Okay, the, the, do you need a motion to, uh, vote by the board for this?
Uh, I think I, if you want to, you can. I mean, I, I'm sensing the board's supportive, so I don't think you have to vote on it. But the most important thing is that as soon as we can get the, I'm gonna guess it'll be the September meeting, we'll have everything for you to officially vote on.
Everybody's in agreement with that? Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, item seven B on the agenda, hot topics for next week. Um, there were four things, uh, mentioned in the agenda. Eric, any?
I'm gonna ask Matt to jump in.
Yeah, uh, so the parking study will not be ready. That's gonna get pushed to the September meeting. Um, and it's placed for whom to have some code enforcement updates and proposed code changes uh, related to our contract code enforcement operation.
Thank you. Okay, uh, on to number eight, updates. Evelyn, would you like to start? Do you have any updates since?
I was trying.
Late June?
Well, since we met. And they were, when they discussed, they were discussing, we didn't put the money. They don't like to have the money in one spot. They want to move it around. And that was caused some disagreement. I can't remember any, I thought all day and I hadn't had time to call. But nothing of significance. I can't even remember that they told, well, I haven't, haven't, we haven't had a meeting since the storm, flood, storm. So I'll be at, at this, I mean, but if they do, make this way. And I'll give it to you to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Yes. It seemed like it was on earlier. Um. Let's see, lots of updates. Uh, so, uh, like I can't remember who all came. Maybe it was Commissioner Darrah, uh, Commissioner English, of course yourself, uh, Mayor, what attended the AG, AG Jackson's press conference. Uh, that was really good to be able to see the, uh, storm image and also visualize how far the water had come, you know, and, and to get into the, the pump house and kind of look and also, I, I know it's not this old, but to see equipment that to me looks like it dates back to the twenties, even though it's just the seventies, but it has that look to it, like that super industrial, uh, nineteen twenties, thirties, uh, look to it. Um, but I was very grateful to Attorney Jackson, Attorney General Jackson's chief of staff, who'd reached out to me about doing a press conference and then Eric, it seemed like y'all leapt, leapt right into action and, and started organizing and, um, and I, the mayor was part of that too. So I was very happy for Hillsboro to, uh, get its, uh, fortunately it's day in the sun, um, with that. Uh, also attended a a meeting in Chicago, uh, for an organization called Local Progress. One of the things they're very interested in is housing. So it was good to sit in and on that and also to get some good ideas about other things like alternative revenues, but the, the problem of going to some of these national conferences is that the policies and proposals and ideas, I'm like, can't do that, can't do that, can't do that either because you know, we're not just a villain's rule state, we're even specialer than that. I wouldn't say specialer, uh, is a word tonight. Um, and so it was kind of hard to get a lot of good ideas, but it was good to hear, uh, the, the motivations behind how different housing policies and such. Uh, also joined the abundance network of elected officials, um, which revs off Ezra's client, Ezra Klein's, uh, abundance book, uh, but mostly it's focused on getting more housing into communities. Also attended the NCBMO conference in Greensboro a few weeks ago. Uh, Congressman, uh, Fushie was one of the speakers, so it was good to see her outside of, uh, outside the district. Uh, did Walk Fairview Day, uh, did two of the three National Night Out events last week. Um, checked out some of the art and, uh, uproar all around, uh, all around town. And then, um, this weekend I'll be attending the, the informational session about the Okoye settlement. So uh, if there's anything interesting to report back from that, I'll do it. And then also I'll have to do it by email, um, so that reminds me that I will be missing our work sessions in August, September and October. It did look like it was all three and then two of my conferences for work, uh, shifted from being Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday to being Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, um, that's unfortunate, but, um, so I'll be missing those work sessions.
Can you repeat the months, August, September and October?
I wonder, you didn't say South Korea, did you?
I did not say South Korea.
I swore you said that. You said it sounded like South Korea.
I'm not sure. I have conferences.
You'll have to think about it.
I'll have to.
Thank you, Matt. Definitely.
Okay, um, first of all, thank you for the support. Um, I wanted to, I, I, I just feel like I've missed a lot. For those who don't know, my daddy did die. His memorials were, are this Friday, so I'll be heading back to Alabama and I will still need to go back as we get things wrapped up, which is gonna take a little while. Um, but, but thank you, um. Sorry, um. I was okay. Okay, um. I had hoped to get Fairview. I actually had an alternator die, so I was in Asheville. Fortunately, um, when it, when the car died, it was very near AAA mechanic, so no damn, well, no extra damage, but got that. But I was late. I, I didn't get into Hillsboro until much later Saturday. So, um, I, I know it was wonderful. I hated to have to miss that. Um, I did think to uh, the forum met, um, this is the, the state level on the council of governments, uh, really focused on disaster recovery. We were meeting in Asheville and we did a tour of Marshall. You know, their public works, their water wastewater treatment is literally on an island that was twenty-five feet underwater where everything that was coming, that came from Asheville went literally through Marshall. Um, it is astounding the cleanup that they've done. Uh, and certainly going down, the, you know, the river, um, is significantly wider. You know, it used to be, you know, where it'd be a, a, a foot, foot and a half deep. It's now like an inch deep, but much wider. Um, this, you can still see the scouring, you know, where the, the railroad has been rebuilt, phenomenal work there. And, and truly the coordinated effort of, of what's been done on the roads. Um, you know, one of the things that uh, folks are not aware of is that, you know, you'll hear about a lot of the state funding. A lot of that state funding has to function as matches for other funding. Uh, so it's, it's, they're getting the greater grants, but you have to have some significant matches. So you won't see that funding directly into project like a one-to-one. What you're getting is it's going to matching to for a bigger plot of money to allow, uh, the cleanup. Um, still, uh, requesting everyone to reaching out to congressional delegations and so much more is, is needed, uh, acro- across the board, uh, at this, that state and federal level, um. You know, in, in Marshall, fortunately only one life was lost, but that's one life too many. Uh, but the, you know, the damage there is, is, uh, again, I, it is phenomenal when you go see how funky their town hall is gone. Uh, there's just, there's part of a wall. Um, Old Depot, they've been over a hundred years. It survived the, the nineteen sixteen floods. All that's left is this part of the foundation. Courthouse that even nineteen sixteen floods never got above steps and this flood was above that into actual into the courthouse. So they were talking about, um, and I'm so glad we have records and backups because their entire town record's gone. Tax records gone, no backups. Land, land use planning gone, police evidence gone. It's, it's wiped off the map. Uh, you know, really for, for, it comes into some of those behind the scenes things we don't think about all the time and, and glad that, that we are, have spent and invested in having cloud storage, having, uh, you know, some of that because I'm still trying to fathom, what do you do when there are? I think of all those court cases, it's, it's gone. Um, where you go for your maps, your tax records, your, your billing, your water.
Water damage.
Gone. So anyhow, that was, that was, it was moving. Um. I also will be gone, um, in October, first meeting in October. That's the, for the National Association of Regional Councils. Um. One of the things, um, recently had, uh, the housing, I chaired the Housing Subcommittee for the Region. And we brought back one of the ideas from the, uh, last conference in June was a housing dashboard that in combination with our re-data center plus what are already planned is to get everyone's housing strategies and maps across the region so that we can start to see at a regional level. Where does it make sense? Where can we collaborate? Where are those sites where it makes sense? You know, you don't have weird abutments. You know, high next to low density or where can we collaborate for large, you know, instead of competing against funding that it's collaborative and maybe larger funding? So that's a, a bigger, uh, bigger picture, but we, we were able to see were, uh, the plans already or these tools already in action in other regions across the country. Um, housing was that, was the complete focus almost. Little bit of disaster recovery, um, in June. Um, on some AI, we'll be hearing more about AI and local government coming in this next conference. Um, and then we do have the COG meeting itself coming up, which I will be attending virtually. Um, and, uh, like I said, there will be, I will be still having to go back and forth to Alabama and help my sisters, we get things. All the other, it's gonna take a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you. Um. So I'll start with my three appointments or ex officio appointments. Um, Solid Waste Advisor Group has not met, but we're looking at October. Um, the, um, Triangle West, uh, TPO, um, didn't meet in July, but, uh, we have, uh, a meeting coming up later this month. Um, the Hillsborough Chamber met, uh, on the sixteenth. Um, the mayor's now an ex officio member of that organization. We talked about branding, uh, strategic planning, retreat, uh, conversation and, um, some conversation about the, uh, gala, which will be, I think in late October. I'm sorry, I didn't write down the date for that, but, um, but let me just quickly run through some of the other things that, um, I've been doing as mayor. Um. So, uh, I went to the celebration of Eric Coleman. He retired from PFAP uh, on the, uh, June twenty-seventh. That was great. Uh, PFAP has done a lot, uh, and we're glad that they are here in Hillsborough. Sue Ellsworth is the new executive director there. Um, obviously during, uh, July and Chantal had just so many, uh, meetings, site visits, press interviews. Uh, Attorney General Jackson, as Matt mentioned, Representative Fushi has also toured. Um, and then we also did the, the break media there, which was very impactful, I think, helping get out the message about Hillsborough and the challenge we face with that loss. Um, many of us attended the UNC Hillsborough tenth anniversary celebration and that was very nice. Um, we had, um, the, I had a meeting with the, uh, the Hillsborough Community Garden, which was swept away by, uh, the flood uh, to help them brainstorm on ideas, uh, to bring that back or relocate it or things like that. Um, met with Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, they're focused on giving out assistance in the area of social determinants of health. Um, was able to connect, um, Mike Peterson with, uh, Yasmin Washington, our social worker. And they may be, uh, interested in helping fund some emergency kits for unhoused people in disasters. Um, we had the, um, lead for North Carolina site visit on the twenty-first, uh, uh, group that, um, you know, Eric helps coordinate. They came and had a, uh, introduction to Hillsborough. So it was fun to give them greetings and hear about where they're going after, as part of their fellowship program. Um, went to speak to the exchange club. Um, this was right after the storm, so that was the main topic, but I also took questions on a variety of other things. Um, attended the uproar kickoff on the first, um, you know, in Bruin. Um, attended the uproar kickoff on the first, um, you know, Verne Bruin, that was awesome to see, you know, a couple hundred people out celebrating something, that was the first kind of big thing since the, the flood. So it was nice to see a little resemblance of, uh, the town getting back to, to normal. Um, went with, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Robb, uh, to the, uh, Orange County EMS, uh, offices on the fourth. Uh, to meet with, uh, Congresswoman Fushi, uh, that was very nice and one takeaway that I'll repeat that I heard uh, at that was, um, story from the, uh, Fire Department Chief from White Cross explaining how they were called to provide mutual aid for Chapel Hill. And on the way to providing mutually, they rescued six people and then they got to Chapel Hill and they rescued about twenty more for flooding. When they got home, they were flooded and had to rescue themselves. So White Cross was just, uh, amazing and, um, it was, it was really good to hear.
They are.
They are, you're right, yeah. Um, Stephanie and I did a Riverwalk video the other day, uh, announcing on Friday the reopening of Riverwalk, that was, uh, a good experience. I hope they got, Stephanie, I hope they got traction. I saw a lot of people out on the Riverwalk later on Friday and everybody was glad to be back. So thank you for all the work that you've done to, to get us there. Um, and then, um, did the Walk Fairview Day, uh, on Saturday and we heard from, um, staff there, from, from Kevin, that as you know, uh, they have lost their SNAP education funding and that affects three programs uh, from Fairview, so there's a lot of conversation between them and me and maybe others on the board and at the county level too. How can we restore that funding or find alternatives to that? Because the programming they do at Fairview is bar none, the best thing ever. So I think we'll be interested in having conversations with them about how to restore that. So that, that's a quick list of some things that I've been doing.
Busy, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, I don't have a whole lot, Port Strangulation didn't meet, we were, um, scheduled to meet next week, but, um, we canceled that meeting because Stephanie has, um, is busy. With fair recovery, so plus, well, we canceled it, they obviously won't get it again in September. Um, as Mayor Mark mentioned, um, our joint team, um, the Emergency Operations Center in Rich County and we're with the Wastewater Chamber, um, doing a tour with, um, Representative Fushi. Um, I did the, also with, with Mark, the, um, on the Village Tour, um, last week also, it was kind of raining that day and, but we, uh, gotta see the, uh, you know, the site where it is and, um, and, um, their plan for, uh, for that development. Um, it was good just to, to be out there with, uh, other people and habitat to, um, ask questions and talk about that. Um, did Water Fairview Day, um, and then our, um, I'll do a couple of things and, and Stephanie, correct me if I'm saying anything wrong, but I think all, you know, Riverwalk was open, um, on Friday from Calvin Street to Cameron, um, the eastern part of it is still, um, has a lot of work to do and, and the plan, I believe, is to when the State Park finishes their stuff and they're ready to reopen, that we reopen that section at the same time that that, um, in River State Park would, um, would also reopen that, um. Kings Highway Park is currently closed, but, um, but it should be opening soon, utility still needs to do a few things out there, but, um, uh, that should be, the, the park actually is, is mostly, I think, ready to go. Um, it's just some, some utility work that needs to be finished there.
Rob, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the kayak launch coming back or is that no longer?
I don't think the kayak, uh, launch is coming back, not, certainly not anytime soon. Um. But the plan is, is, uh, um, is to, to talk about it a little bit more, but it won't be coming back anytime soon. Um, everything at, um, all the, um, the floating, uh, what's all this stuff?
Wetlands.
Yeah, floating wetlands were gone, they were, everything basically just, um, was washed away. And then, um, but Kings Highway Park, the other, so Gold Park still has some significant, um, the work to be done there and it's still be, it is closed and probably closed the next six weeks, maybe longer. Um, it's mostly in the, in the restroom area, um, and dog park and, um, and, and other kind of areas, mostly around the, the building to the dog park area. Uh. I think that's it in terms of like park stuff. Did I miss anything, Stephanie?
No, I'll, I'll add something that you didn't know about though. We're, we're missing a planter. And I think we should have like a treasure plant and I'll give fifty bucks to anybody who finds this.
Where?
Planter, we found everything that got washed away except for one giant planter, it's four feet wide and three feet tall. And it was in Gold Park, so if you guys are out and about, anywhere between here and Falls Lake, you see a gray planter in a tree or under a bridge, I will give you fifty dollars of my own money to get that planter back. And everything else has been identified, located and recovered. Um, unfortunately, the dock, of course, and the people tell are not uh, you know, repairable, but we're, we're in soccer goals either, but those things will be replaced. There's one elusive planter.
The last thing I'll share is, uh, Megan and I will be here in Hillsborough for, uh, this Thursday for, uh, leadership Chapel Hill and, uh, looking forward to meeting with Mark and Matt. Doing that, Big Murray with the uproar and walking around Hillsborough and sharing, uh, all the special things with everybody else. Forward to it. Megan?
Um, so a few things have been mentioned, um, the tenth anniversary of the UN Hospital, I attended that. Um, Attorney General Jackson's press conference on the River Pump Station, thanks to everybody who coordinated that, it was, it was great, uh. It was hot, great. Uh, I had Tourism Board last week and we heard summaries from our contract partners on how their past year, uh, how their past year's programming had gone. Uh, one probably notable thing is, um, without June yet being included into the revenue, uh, the town is down eleven percent and little anecdotal information was that residents probably are seeing maybe the same number of people, just the tickets aren't as high as what they might have been, uh, previously. Uh, also, I attended the Suzaclo performance, which was, um, they were awarded a grant from the Tourism Board. Uh, it was a great, great time to get out and see some local theater in our community. Um, I've been able to go to all the Hillsborough Upper Art Pieces, so I gotta go hit Chapel Hill and Carboro the next week before I go out of town. Uh, then, uh, which I will not be here for next Thursday is my board meeting. And TDA, uh, their August meeting, as we've rescheduled that for September. Uh, those are my updates. I did have two questions, just to but they're in my head, they don't need to be answered right now, but for the hot topics for next meeting. Um, if the Meadowlands rezoning request was also, but I thought that also included a GDO change also, that could be presented, is that something that also we'll talk about maybe at that next meeting? Anyway, doesn't have to be answered yet, but just something that I wrote down after hearing that. Uh, the second thing was about the uh, the insurance from the, uh, League of Municipalities, if we knew what the status was of that. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
There's one thing I understand of that, no, it's not really part of my report. Does anybody know where, um, a dark walk is or where, what, where it was?
Thank you.
The dark, dark walk, that was on, uh, uh.
You know where dark walk is?
Yeah, um, Riverwalk, or what, not, not Riverwalk.
It's on the outs, it's out in this private, they, um, and they had every unknown wildflower you could think of, I wonder if it was all washed away. And it's worried me and it's private, you're not supposed to go there. And when I was in the tenth grade, we had to do a wildflower collection and Mrs. Jones said, you may go down, Elizabeth Matheson went with me, we went down and we looked at all the wildflowers, we, we had to draw them. And, but she couldn't pick them. But I want, and they, but there was a pretty valley of Lydia the Valley that was between the treasures and the, um, Joneses, and I wonder if all of that got washed away.
Of Steph, Stephanie.
There's a lot of debris and damage, I don't think it was washed away, but there's, it doesn't look the way that it used to look because the flooding actually went up into Tusco.
So you were allowed to go down there?
No, I can, I can now see it from our side.
You can see it?
Yeah, and there's so many trees down, you can see.
Dark walk?
You can see the actual long, the, the dark, the.
Yeah, but, but the cliffs are all still there and the, the ground where the path is, is still there, but there's lots of trees down.
But along the river.
It's still there.
Down, so.
No.
She'll come back. But that, that is really important, cause that used to be where people went swimming on Sundays. So that you live back down there, you could have gone swimming on it. It was considered to be a depot. And have any thoughts?
Thank you, I, oh, thank you. Town manager, do you have a report?
You've heard enough from me the last month.
Okay, and, uh, any staff reports are in the agenda. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session um, to consult the town attorney in order to preserve attorney claim for a second. Kathleen, thank you, Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any approve? Okay, thank, we'll take a small break before we start the session.